Okay, the next item on the agenda is the agenda itself. Dr. Schreger, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
I had entered a motion to accept the motion we had presented.
I'm looking motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Don, second by Karen, to accept the agenda as stated. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and then so move. Our next item is action on minutes from Monday, August 27th. This will be included in your board packet.
Are they commotion to over the minutes for our last meeting in August 27th? That's presented.
Second. The motion was made by Diamond, second by Joe, to accept the minutes that I presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and then so move. Our next item is action on the vouchers, Mr. Pierce. Make a motion to approve vouchers totaling $1,078,844.55 as presented.
Second.
The motion was made by Mike and seconded by Diamond to accept the vouchers as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and then so move. No one has signed up for public participation. We will move on to item G, which is student council report. And I'd like to welcome our new student council rep, Miles Stuckey. And maybe, Miles, you can tell us a little bit about yourself and why in the world you'd ever want to be involved with this school.
Hi, hi, I'm Miles. I dominated last year in spring student councils. And I thought it'd be honored to sit here and listen to all of what goes on with our talent, our D, through my whole life. And I'm proud to be part of the building.
Okay, thank you. And then we also have our returning rep from last year, Anna Quadi. Anna, welcome back.
Thank you. So at the high school, we started getting ready for homecoming already because it's coming up pretty quick. This year, we're playing banana grow, and they're the Eagles. So our theme is going to be "End the Eagles." Our theme is going to be "End the Eagles." And then our spirit days are going to be our favorite character day, dressed up, unimpressed, animal day. And then we'll have blackout date, class color day as well.
It's hard to believe that homecoming is coming up already. Okay, any questions for the student council report? And then move on to building and department announcements. Mr. Schreger, who would you like to go first?
Sure.
Mr. Lyon will go ahead and jump on up.
So at Northside, like many of the schools, we've got a strong start to the school year focusing a lot on positive behavior and intervention in sports. So for us, not education, that's a proactive teaching of expectations in all areas of our school. We celebrated on Friday with all schools assembled. I'd like to give a shout out to the high school of Mr. Billhorn for letting the high school athletes, the prom squad, and football team come over and celebrate with our student athletes. Our team really seemed to be starting strong. And I really feel like it got the kids excited for the school year, a lot of positive energy, knowing, again, all the expectations in our school community, but also acknowledging and celebrating all the positive behavior that they have each and every day.
All right, similar at the middle school, we had our PBIS kickoff in which the middle school Red Hawk students learned what it means to be a Red Hawk in terms of being polite, prepared, productive, and safe in all of our school environments. We also had our web orientation with our eighth grade web leaders. Web is kind of the high school version of Link where we have 46 eighth grade web leaders who take small groups of seventh graders during the second day of school, kind of take them under their wing, orientate those seventh graders to the life of the middle school. From a teaching and learning perspective, we also have five days under our belt with the new middle school nine-period day. We went from an A-period day to a nine-period day. We got an extended math block for 84 minutes a day with math, which we're really excited about. But everything's up to grade start at the middle school.
Thanks, Mrs. Peter.
At Harmony and Consolidated, we're excited by the start and the energy that students bring at the beginning of the year. Not unlike the other schools, we're also teaching expectations. And we have that challenge at the K-3 level of an opportunity to really welcome those new kindergarteners and what that brings. And so it's an all hands on deck, really, time of the year. And just a shout out to the staff at both buildings for really pulling together to bring those little ones in and make them feel so welcome. Also, I want to spotlight an opportunity that we're nurturing, continue to nurture with our Milton Public Library. We already had our first visit with Jamie Anderson, our children's librarian from the Milton Public Library. She's phenomenal and comes to visit with our kindergarten classes, and that already has begun. And it's always a big hit, and we're excited about that. And at the K-3 level, we'll continue to try to nurture that opportunity for our families to understand what's happening at the library through our monthly newsletter.
Thank you, Mrs. Peter.
All right. Good evening. At the high school, like everybody else, as we have got things rolling, the first day, this is the second year now that we've had freshman only, on the first day proved to be a success again. We got a lot of positive back from parents on that day, students. We run our link crew orientation day, like Web has Mr. Peter mentioned. So students go through orientation, and then they actually spend part of the day in a small group where we come their freshman homeroom with link crew leaders, talking about how to be a high school student. And it's really upperclassmen that actually run part of that day. Then students actually get to participate in an activity fair. So we have about 25 organizations that have an activity fair for freshmen to see what happens at the high school and ways to get involved. And then they get a chance to run their schedule. The rest of the way that's been rolling is always, there's always some schedule changes and things like that, and students kind of settle into the week. But we are excited to get homecoming planned right here. It does seem to come earlier and earlier each year, but that will be on us very shortly.
Thank you, Mr. Billhorn.
In HR, we have a couple items going on. We are currently still hiring support staff for the new school year. So that's an ongoing process. We're looking at five to six positions that are still vacant, that we're either posting now or hiring. And in some situations, we've had to repost. So that's still an ongoing process. Also, we're very grateful for all the volunteers that volunteer their time in the school, the church of Milton. HR is busy processing all of those volunteer background checks, stacks and stacks, getting into the hundreds of volunteers that have, want to help out the classroom.
Thank you, Mr. Schreger.
Welcome back to our students. Miles, do you remember that time in second grade when, oh wait, we'll talk about that.
That sounds familiar to me.
4K world, we have the 4K center over at Small Wonders where we have five full sections over there. It's actually 10 sections, but we have a full house over there. And so working out those keys with the pickup and drop off every day, it's getting a little bit smoother. So we're going to continue to work on that. At Milton East, community opportunity next week, we have the Rock and Read where we have this drum brave guy who's going to come and promote litter seed. So if you're looking for something to do, next Thursday night from 5 to 7, Milton East.
Thank you, Mrs. Kerman.
At West, we've already had our first all-school assembly last Friday as we welcomed Rocky the Red Hawk over and congratulated all the students on learning the West Way for their first week back at school. And we are truly enjoying the new drop-off and pickup area. It has made life so much calmer and smoother and safer for all of the students. So thank you very much.
How is your new parking lot working? In driveway?
That's working, that's what's working great. So in the morning, they come in. It's so slick. It's so nice. Nobody's got run over, and we're very grateful.
Yes, yes, we are. Thank you, Mr. Schreger.
Thank you. On the communications and school safety side of things, first on communications, I'd like to introduce an exciting project that we've been working on. It's actually called Pop Happenings. It's going to be an annual newsletter that we look to put out later this fall. Currently, we're working in seven different mediums, between social media, website, and things like that. Our social media followers now, between all three platforms that we work within, are about 8,000 followers. Our website, I looked at analytics from our first week of school, 32,000 different unique click clicks on our website pages. So it gets a fair amount of traction. But there's still a segment of the population that we feel like we're not reaching. And so as we look to make sure that we're communicating with our people in all the different mediums that they might be within, print media is one that we still feel that there's value to use. And so Board Member Karen Hall has been working with us on that, and then also Sarah Brechtill from our yearbook committee. So we'll be looking to put together an annual report that we will put out in late October, or sending out in late, mid to late November. On the school safety side of things, we did apply for a second round of school safety grants. The adjustments to that and the per pupil allotment came in today from the Department of Justice. So we'll be putting in for $193,000 of new equipment. Primarily, they will be focused on some additional radios. We'll be doing some building device amplification here at Milton High School so that police and fire radios can get out of the building easier. And then the other piece, Stephen and this crowd have given us some quotes for improving some entrance ways at Northside in addition to a Raptor ID visitor management system. So when people come into the building, they scan their ID and then be able to get an instant background check done, get a visitor badge, and then have access to the building after that was done. So that's what's happening in communications and school safety.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader.
In buildings and grounds, I'm happy to announce that we did make it. There were some days that I was wondering if we would or not. But I just want to give a huge shout out to all the building custodial staff maintenance and grounds, people that put in such long hours and a long summer to make these buildings as clean and sparkling as they are when the kids come back in the fall. So just a huge shout out to them. And we also wrapped up all of our summer projects. And like Mrs. Schwangel said, we got an A+ at Milton West so far, so that's good news for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. Dr. Schreger.
Yes, as you know, there's plenty going on. And so as Board Members and representatives of various buildings, we encourage you to stop by and get involved whenever you can. Love having you at the kid events, and there's plenty of them, either extracurricular, curricular, et cetera. I want to give you a brief overview for Wednesday. We have our strategic plan draft, our community workshop coming up. And the format, in essence, there'll be a, at 5:45, Mr. Billhorn will take people around on a tour of the high school. We're going to start the high school since he'll be here. There'll be other potential tours coming out down the road. So we'll have that for about a half hour, 45 minutes or so. We start at 6:30 here, unless there's a large group wanting to tour, we end up being a few minutes later. That's fine, but we're planning on 6:30 here for the workshop. We'll do a brief welcome from Tom, and then get into the board vision for facilities and planning from Joe and Karen as our co-chairs for the committee, review the, your parameters you've come up with. Talk for a couple minutes about the strategic plan, facilities process. I'll give you a little bit of updates, and again, these are like five-minute type of things, we'll kind of keep them flowing. Some data review of some community data, enrollment, et cetera. Then we'll have a brief recap of the options that we had talked about in the last, it's been a couple, probably about a month and a half now, we've talked about a couple different pathways for solutions. Again, not the only solutions, but we'll recap some of the places where we have been, including the tax impact scenarios of just dollar amounts, not of specific projects. And then we're going to allow for community members who have ideas, not on bits and pieces, but like, here's a recommendation from a community member on a facility solution. And so they'll have five to seven minutes or so to present. We'll have them sign up ahead of time. We're asking that anyone who wishes to present to the board would bring hard copies of materials so that way we can then look at them later after they're done. And the board can then assess at a later time what to do with that information. So there'll be community input time for those who wish to present something to the board. Then we're going to get to a, the table, the roundtable discussions. And what we're envisioning is this, we'll have four stations set up over in the other area there in the library. And from there, we'll have different puzzle pieces, which I have one up on the screen here to show you. This is an example, this is the layout of East. And so you'll see the current layout of East Elementary School. The little bump out here is what's in the lower level of the basement. Okay, so this is the current footprint of East. And what we're going to provide for each table will be this for every building in the district. Obviously, the bigger the building, like high school is going to take up a much bigger space on the table. But every table will have every one of these. So that way, there's not going to be like a middle school table, elementary table, high school table. We want everyone to be able to talk about whatever they wish, the community members. But then they'll get puzzle pieces that will be able to be put on. So this right here is, again, the same layout, but then there's some reno there. And we talked at that previous meeting about, probably about a month and a half ago by now, through the recommendation of our administration staff, if we're going to do an East, for example, addition, it flattens over a little bit. There'll be a piece that you can lay in here, and it tells you what types of classes are there. And there's also, right here, this little label right there, will have the cost of the addition, as well as there'll be a second cost, which is the cost of the renovations here. So if you're going to, for example, redo this space, then there'll be some remodeling of this. Here's the different costs of that. There's also another square or rectangle, this right here, is 4K. So as people are discussing potential solutions, and again, people have their own as well, but this is, again, starting points. But these, these are the ones that we had talked about through, through staff. We're going to do the addition, in this case of East, here's what we included, and that's included in the, in the presentation that we presented before. Here's, again, 4K. If the board, community wished to have 4K in each building, here's a cost here of what the 4K classrooms would be. And so the community members will have all these different puzzle pieces to play with and give their input on. We plan on having two board members at each table, but then there'll be an odd person out, and I'll be with that person on the board at a table. I will have administrators available as well to answer questions and provide clarity if there are questions regarding certain pieces of things. And so in, in keeping with people wanting to have that tactile, be able to touch things and move things around. And we believe that having the footprint of the property is important so people can see what type of space does it take up? And you know, if there's a configuring of, well, why don't you put it over here, or do this? I mean, obviously, if you can talk about it, but then you can see what it does to the, to the landscape. And so that is our intent for, for Wednesday. And then we're going to ask that there's a recorder for each table to jot down what, what the ideas that are generated from those discussions. Obviously, we want to get input, the input, so we want those ideas generated. We are going to have some, some guiding questions for people to help us move forward as well. And a couple, and there could obviously be more things, but the, the top three we talked about. What are your top three district facility priorities, in your opinion? It would be nice to get community input on what people feel in the community are the top priorities for facilities. If you, if work is completed at, at schools, what do you think about, what do you like about the current options? What would you like to see changed? So if you look at the puzzle pieces, what would you like to see? Do you like how it's laid out? Do you like it? You know, what are your thoughts? Again, we built this from a programming standpoint, which is what the board has told us quite a bit. If we can do, we do programming, how will we do it? And that's why these spaces were designed. But again, everything is on the drawing board still. One of the questions we'd like to have answered, does the high school, does the community feel that the current high school should be the permanent place for a high school? Or would there be eventual expansion in having a new high school with this eventually becoming a middle school, whether it's in one phase or two or whatever? And then also, we'd like to hear from people as to what dollar value or dollar amount do we feel that the board should target for reference, so we can get some input. Again, depending how many people are here, obviously, the more, the better. We want to have input from people, but obviously, whatever number it is, it's going to be a small sample size from the community. But we thought it'd be good to have people give input. And so with report out, we're hoping that people have, whether it's consensus of that table, whether it's various opinions of the table, just list it all out so then we can give it to you to kind of sort through. Because as you know, we'll have a meeting next week, so we're not going to make any decisions, obviously, Wednesday night. Wednesday night is for us to listen and for you to hear what people have to say. And so, but we wanted to kind of keep it structured somewhat, not, not defined as far as what the opinion should be, but at least keep it flowing so it's not an all-night thing. And so we really hope that people will come with their ideas, if they present to you, that they are succinct, and they bring something in writing so you can digest it later. And then they come with a collaborative mindset to look at potential solutions. And we hope that having something where you can touch it and move it around and play with it is what people will find appealing.
And I may add too that it's important that the community come, even though they don't have a proposal or a plan, just to come and be able to see some of the information and some of the plans being offered. So put the word out there, if you have any, any plans, any ideas, or just get people to come so they can experience it as well.
Okay, can I ask a question? Sure. I just want to ask the principal, have you used Teachers on Call yet? Have you had to use it? And is it working okay?
So far, so good.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The second number is the presentations. We have one, and it's the summer school report.
In your board packet, there was a summer school highlights memo, so I trust that you've seen that already. I'll just, I won't speak to the whole document, but I'll share with the people in attendance. Our FTE was 86, which was up from 79 the year before. What that does for the school district is that we can use 40% of the three-year average of our summer school FTE. And that number can be included in our third Friday count for the general pupil count. So summer school attendance, that FTE actually does help provide funding back to the district for the general fund. So it doesn't just raise funds to use for summer school, but it actually is a great way to increase the amount of funds that we can receive for our general fund. So we're very pleased that the number went up. We hope that it always does. There's a lot of factors that go into summer school attendance. We do not provide transportation, so we really rely on the community, our families, to transport the students to their school. We do provide a shuttle bus between the buildings, so students who start at Milton West in a class can take a shuttle bus to the high school and, and take gymnastics up there for their second class and be picked up then by their transportation. So it's a wonderful thing that so many community members can make it happen and bring our students here. You'll see that we had almost 1,800 students participate this year, so that's a, a big number when you think about the size of our district. That's more than half of our students who actually are there and participating in some capacity during summer school. We offer classes that affect our youngest students who just turned four, and they're coming in for that jumpstart to pre-K, so their very first experience in a school for some of them, all the way through enrichment and credit recovery classes for our high school students. Just a couple of highlights this year, we continued offering a new approach to regaining credit for our high school students. We're trying to do more of a flexible model, so students in the past used to have to come for a full six weeks to regain their credit. Now we're really fine tuning it to the areas of the classes that they failed, and then they need to come and, and pass those components of the courses. And so students are very motivated by this. Some students are coming for only a week and meeting those requirements to then earn that credit that they didn't earn during the year. Other classes are more of a class that they can take. This year, we offered two physical education classes, so those were the full six weeks. They had to come every day because it was the work that would be in a full semester class at the high school. Offered a lot of flexibility to our high school students who wanted a little more freedom within their schedule during the school year. Several students took the PE 9 and the PE 10 classes, and that offered them a chance this fall to be in other classes for those students who wanted to take a really challenging schedule, or those students who really were having a hard time fitting in a study hall. There's all kinds of reasons students took those classes, but we did have full classes for both of those, and we hope to continue that again next year. As always, we try to partner with families and invite them into several different performances and activities through summer school, as well as the community. This year, we took a little different spin on our classic cookies, cookies, cookies class, and we changed it to baking and the community. And so they, that class partnered with the Milton Food Pantry. And all of the items that the students made, they had bake sales, and then all of the profits went to our Milton Food Pantry. So just another little way that we, that we are proud in Milton to partner with the community. So that's a little summary. I know there's a lot more information on the document. Did anyone have any questions about summer school? Brian?
Actually, I answered one of my questions, but just for clarification, so 40% of the three-year average of summer school FTEs, that can be added to the third Friday enrollment number or a membership number?
That would come as our membership report.
Oh, membership, not enrollment.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we still offer baseball class?
We do, and yeah, Mr. Erwin helped with baseball a couple of years. And we still have baseball. I think we had 47 students enroll in baseball this, this summer, so close to 50 students.
Mr. Davies still teaches?
Mr. Davies. And you know, I'm glad you mentioned that. Milton Summer School wouldn't be possible without the staff. These are really highly skilled teachers who, for the most part, are Milton employees, but in many cases, we, we have teachers who come to us from other districts, some of whom, like the teacher who's taught the baseball class, have taught summer school for over 20 years for Milton. So another kind of loyalty. They look forward to coming back. They wouldn't work for any other district during summer school, and we're happy to have that, that loyalty for the program. So, yeah.
And I want to make a comment. I wish people in the community would come and watch Mr. Davies, how he runs that class, because he really makes the class work. He gets, every kid gets a nickname, every kid has a special place, and I think that's what summer school is all about, so.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question for Mr. Erwin.
Sure.
We, we have 26 students that were non-residents, so we didn't get, we didn't get to count them. We had talked about possibly something done up in Madison about allowing us to count our non-resident students. Any?
That's something, that's really something that I can look into and get some bipartisan support for.
Because over the years, we've had, you know, this year, for example, we had 26 that weren't able to come. So if you look at that number over three years, that's, that's.
Yeah, actually, the bigger number is the open enrollment number, so we can, you're correct, we cannot count non-residents. We do have to account for them in the report, but the students that are open enrollment, we cannot account for either. And so that was 78 students this year. Last year, that was 69 students. And so all of the classes, some of those students are students who are in band, for example. Our band program, our high school band program, huge shout out to Nate Pearson, everything that he does for our high school students. That program alone accounted for 11 of the FTE, of the 86. So those students are in clinics and practices throughout the whole summer. That is part, under our umbrella of summer school. But if there's a handful of students who are open enrollment, we just have to draw a line through, and we cannot count any of those minutes. And so that's a tough one. Former board members and I have written letters and have tried to reach out to the, to the state legislature about that. But so far, that Um, but, um, so far, that has still been the ruling from DPI. Change, things change every year. We didn't used to be able to count parades, now this year we can. That's part of why we had a little bit of a bump in the number that, of FTE that we had from band. Um, but, yeah, we will keep watching for those positive changes, Mr. Erwin.
Yeah, actually, Representative Kittsens has a study group looking at the formula, and this is where that would take place, and how we can include that into the formula.
Okay.
And so, I have a former Milton student who, he represents, pressuring, cause Brad Shertley, he's one of his constituents, so I'll have him get on that for us.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions about summer school? Hats off to you and, and, it takes a lot of people to pull this off, so, job well done, again, that's all.
Thank you. I should give a shout-out to Matt Dieterl, who of course is my partner in summer school, but, um, for some reason, wanted me to be...
Yeah, she got yours.
Uh, he really, um, operates the middle school and high school programs during the summer, and then I'm at Northside and West, um, during the summer, but we work together behind the scenes to, to organize everything, so. And a thanks to Sarah Warren, who is now, um, Stephen's new assistant. Uh, we'll miss her in summer school. We know we'll find another good person to help us run the ship, so, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Number three, policy committee report. Mr. Martin?
Okay, our, uh, policy committee met tonight, uh, prior to the board meeting here, and in our ongoing effort to get our policies updated, uh, the administrative staff had vetted through another, oh, fifteen or twenty of them here and, uh, walked us through them of the potential changes. Pretty, pretty, uh, same old, same old as far as the ones that we've already updated. It's grammatical changes for the most part and, and complying with statutory changes and some of that. So, I have a list here of the number of the policy that we are, uh, doing a first reading on tonight, and in a couple of weeks, we'll do a second reading and, and adopt those policies as they've been, uh, amended. And, uh, those numbers would be policies fourteen-twenty-two, sixteen-twenty-three, twenty-one-thirty-one, twenty-two-seventy, twenty-four-twelve, twenty-four-sixty-one, twenty-five-ten, thirty-one-twenty-two, thirty-one-twenty-five, forty-one-twenty-two, forty-one-thirty-nine, fifty-one-eleven, fifty-one-thirty-six, fifty-four-twenty-one, fifty-five-sixteen, fifty-six-thirty, sixty-eight-hundred, seventy-five-forty, point oh-six, and eighty-four-sixty-two. I'll, uh, spare you the title of all those policies, and suffice it to say that those are the ones that we're presenting for first reading tonight.
Joe, you want to remind the board members where they can find it? Do you wanna look at them and see the titles on them?
Yeah, absolutely, of course. All of our policies are on our, our district website there, in, in a couple formats. The active and current policies are listed there, and then, uh, the ones that are under draft, revision, or whatever are also, uh, delineated or highlighted.
When you log in...
Under Board Docs, yeah.
Okay, when you log in to the Board Docs, you can look under draft, and the board members will have access to that. The other thing is, you also have that spreadsheet, and then there's a, right now, we're in the, uh, fuchsia color, or purple color, that's where the current ones that, uh, Joe was mentioning, and then we'll have the next, the next audited blue. So if you go to that spreadsheet, you'll notice ones, and there's dates of the colors, so where they're at, so.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Um, number four is joint, uh, we have a joint finance and technology committee report, and Mike and Don, I'm not sure which one of you are going to present.
I'm just the money and use the technology, so I can go first.
Well, I can, I...
Before you... You got your guy up here, Ray.
Before you start, I would actually like to ask to excuse myself, and both of you outside the discussions over, just to keep any perception of, uh, this one's your decision.
I certainly think that'd be appropriate, and we can let you know when we're done discussing. In short, as we're talking about the technology, as you know, technology continues to change quickly, and, at, and, an iPad that we purchased in two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen is already out of date. And we have an opportunity, uh, to, um, to get new iPads at a much cheaper cost. It also means that trading our old iPads, um, because of the new iPads coming in being cheaper, our older iPads have less value, so the faster we move, the more savings that we can save. And by renegotiating our lease, I think we bring our total cost down from two-point-seven million down to two-four, four million, correct that? And so, I recommend, and I, I think this is a good idea, the new iPads are cheaper, they have a faster processor, uh, that works, they have, they have a larger screen and better resale value. So it all makes sense to renegotiate our lease, save our taxpayers' money, and get better tools for our students in the classroom.
I would just correct you real quick. The iPad has the same set screen as the laptop, but however, just...
Okay, okay, thank you. So I recommend that we, um, that we make a motion to accept, um, the work that is done in renegotiating this lease.
Um, we do need a very specific motion. Is there any questions to answer in the end? Is there any other questions before we, before the motion? There isn't a very specific motion in the board packet that we need to...
We can, we can get, have a second, and we can have discussion.
Oh, second?
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, uh, to approve the, um, I'll call it a refresh. Uh, any discussion or any comments at this point? Ed, I think if you have something more to add, you can...
Sure. Just, just to elaborate on some of the numbers that Don was talking about, we are, we would be moving from an eleven-inch model for our students to a thirteen-inch. The reason for that is the eleven-inch is no longer available, so that obviously puts the value of our current eleven-inch fleet in depreciation more right away. So we're getting better product for less money. Uh, the same thirteen-inch that we bought for, thirteen-inch laptop for our student, our staff, I'm sorry, for about eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars, we're now getting for seven-hundred, so we're getting a really good buy on those. Um, the other thing, we would get another additional two-hundred-and-fifty machines total, district-wide iPads and laptops. We're seeing these more, more aides are needing laptops and, and iPads, and of course, our continued growth, so this would carry a spore for growth in the next few years. And ultimately, it's a savings to the taxpayer, so our, ultimately, our payments go down every year. So it's kind of a win. We get, uh, basically new equipment, lo, lower payment, and more devices, or else, the three big points. Any other questions on that?
Any other questions or comments? We do have a motion in a second, um, to approve the Apple refresh. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bring them, so move. Thank you.
Somebody wanna tell Diamond to come back in?
And that was the only item that you had on the agenda, correct? Mr. Pearson?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna go ahead with that. We will reflect in the minutes that Diamond recused herself in the discussion and the vote.
Yes, thank you. Number five, uh, new business, uh, discussing possible action on Northside McKenzie Environmental Field Trip. Mr. Lyons.
I can speak from here. It's gonna be our forty-third year partnering with McKenzie Environmental Center, so it's pretty awesome.
Could you...
Go ahead.
For the, for the couriers.
Oh, sure.
Um, come over, face her, facial, oligogenic.
We're super excited. This is gonna be our forty-third year partnering with McKenzie Environmental Center, and it's been a great tradition, um, at Northside. It's being carried on by two new coordinators for the event, uh, and Mrs. Smith and Mr. Kleist are now running the event. It had been Mrs. Barry Fraser for many years prior to that. Uh, the cost of the field trip is down five dollars, we're really excited about that this year. The state has a, a shuttle bus that we can actually use there, so we save over the busing costs that way, so we were at fifty-two dollars a student to participate in that field trip. Are there any questions at all from the board about the trip or the experience?
And according to the minutes, and I think it's probably been a tradition for forty-three years, that if, if some, a student, uh, has some financial hardships, um, that there's a way that they can attend as well.
Absolutely, yeah. We partner with friends at Northside, and we've had very generous donations to our school community in the past, you know, make sure every student can go who wants to. Uh, we had a couple of students who chose not to go last year, because those are for personal reasons.
Okay. Any other questions for Senator Lyons? Hearing that, I would entertain a motion to accept, um, the McKenzie Environmental Field Trip, come on.
That's a hold.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Mike, and a second by Karen, who approved the McKenzie Field Trip. Uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bring them, so move. Thank you. Uh, that is a, a pretty, a pretty cool function and project. That's, uh, for forty-three years, wow, time flies.
We had the high school students and Palm Squad share their favorite memory at our assembly on Friday, and nearly all of them had mentioned outdoor rent. That's one of their best experiences at Northside.
Okay. So, Mr. Gavigan, did you go on that field trip?
No.
The next one is a discussion.
Carl, did you go on that one?
No. My wife did.
Discussion on possible action on the Milton, uh, High School Extended Travel Request.
All right. Thank you. Yes, in your packets, you do have, it's actually, uh, the form is a new form. Uh, we actually wanted to make sure that we tried to catch as many of them as we could, and actually talked with the athletic department. Oftentimes, when we have students that go on state trips, we might be a little optimistic here, but we had any possible state trip, uh, reflected in here, because if it's overnight, then it does need board approval. So we're doing an all-in-one batch, but we do have, uh, some other individual trips. Uh, this, there's over thirty-five on here. Uh, of note, the Spanish pub will be going to Spain next summer. Uh, thirteen students are currently slated to go there, and then the science trip is actually going to Puerto Rico. Currently, we have twenty students, uh, going to Puerto Rico. Uh, the science trip, actually, in twenty-twenty, uh, they are gonna be going to Iceland, that would be reflected in next year's request, so. Pretty cool trips. The band is gonna be going to Florida, uh, and then the, uh, Discovering Democracy, but then also the regular FFA, FBLA, forensic, uh, the normal trips that we take each year.
Okay, lots of opportunities first.
Lots of opportunities.
Okay. Certainly entertain a motion to approve the...
Well, first I have the worst history club, Erwin.
It was, it was approved, it was approved last spring.
Okay, and where, where did they say we were going, though? What are they...
Charleston.
Charleston. The point I wanna make, though, is I'm hoping Charleston will be there after this hurdle.
Yes, we are hoping that's...
I'd like a motion to approve these trips.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion by Diamond, and a second by Karen to approve the extended travel request. Uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bring them, so move. Thank you.
Yep.
And, and again, if you, any of those groups need chaperones and things, you know, especially some of them abroad?
Yes, we had the Iceland trip already, like, very long, but it's, but not nearly as long as when they went to the Las Vegas last summer.
Aye, with a man.
Yes, they're long.
Thank you. Um, the next action item is on the eighteen-nineteen open enrollment alternative applications. Uh, Kim, I believe we have one in and three out, is that correct?
That's correct, on the summary sheet that you have. And of note, is, uh, of the three transfers out, none of them are currently, were currently attending Milton last year.
Okay. Would I entertain a motion to approve the application?
Also move.
Second?
Off my, Joe, and a second by Diamond to accept the open enrollment, uh, applications, which include one in and three out. Uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Ayes have it, so move. Six miscellaneous, uh, we have action on the staffing report. Um, I believe we have five contracts that are letters of employment, and we have one resignation.
I make a motion that we accept the staffing report as presented.
I'll second.
Question made by Karen and second by Don. All those in favor, signify, uh, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bring them, so move the staffing report as presented. Um, next item is action on Gibson donations. Um, this mean we have two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Accept those gifts with gratitude.
Second?
Okay, motion is made by Mike and second by Diamond to accept the donations with gratitude. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, again, uh, thank us, thank you very much to the generous community, um, business and individuals as well. Uh, some upcoming, um, meeting dates. Uh, before we get to that, Dr. Schiger, I, I think you probably all received the September issue of the Wisconsin School News. It's, uh, from WASB. Um, that is a good resource, it has a lot of good articles in it. Uh, this month, there's two that, um, I found very interesting. Uh, one is safety, don't forget the basics. Um, and, and our safety, uh, program has done a really good job at making sure they, uh, cover all the bases. And the other one was the, uh, the importance of trust, and that's how boards work with the community and also work with administration. So, uh, those are two really, really good articles, um, so please take some time to, to go over those. Meetings, we have the, the strategic plan meeting on Wednesday. Uh, any other ones, Doctor Tiger?
Correct, we have the, five forty-five is the tour here, high school meeting in the lobby for that. Uh, six-thirty will be in this room for the meeting. Um, looking for, uh, September twenty-fourth is the annual meeting, so we'll have that, and that will be at Northside. So that, that's, again, at six-thirty, but that's at Northside, and it's posted, but I'm at Northside on the twenty-fourth.
Will there be cookies there?
Yes.
Yes, yes, I will.
Yes, I'll have my people get back your people on the...
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, looking for a, uh, HR committee meeting on October fifth, we'll, we'll talk about that after the meeting. There is a, uh, the following board meeting is October eighth, and they'll be preceded by a policy meeting at five-thirty, with the October eighth meeting being here at the high school, and also the policy committee meeting, um, at five-thirty for policy and six-thirty for the board meeting. And then, there was a, uh, a workshop sent out, uh, workshop invite for board members,